This conference will now be recorded.
Rob, let us know this afternoon that he's heading to the airport to pick up the sun so he won't be joining us. I see Danny and Kevin online.
Hello there.
Hi Danny.
Hi, how are you doing?
Very well. How about you Kevin? Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
Great. Yeah, we're doing good.
So when I go to another screen, that's the video.
Yeah, I know. I couldn't figure out every bit. So I just, you can double screen.
Yeah. You have really been getting into this.
No, not really. I figured that. I listened to that little thing that told you when you turned it on, it told you that.
Have you learned the little swipe overs to where it makes some little boxes that you can kick off to the side?
I don't know. Not really.
I need to have Rob come in and teach us a class.
Yeah, Rob.
It is seven o'clock. Welcome everyone to the December seventeenth DeSoto City Council meeting. We'll start with roll call.
Lainey?
Here.
Hunter Michael?
Present.
Murdock?
Here.
Ritter?
Here.
And Councilman Daniels is absent this evening.
I would invite you all to please arise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God who has taken my earth, which is the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great just and strong.
Our first item tonight is a public hearing on our budget amendment. Yes, Council, it is. We've advertised for tonight for the public hearing on the budget amendment. We discussed it at the December fifth meeting. No new information on that. I gave a presentation in the staff report on that. At that time, just in general summary, we do need amendments to the general fund primarily for CARES Act expenses that come through and will be reimbursed. We need an amendment to the refuse fund primarily because of an increase in service accounts, commercial service accounts, that resulted in more billings and therefore more payments to our refuse vendor. And we also need an amendment to the water fund primarily because of a line removal project that was slated to take place last year that actually took place this year. In terms of dollar amounts, the actual, when the state budget forms are attached to the staff report, those are the official documents that we'll have to submit to the county and then to the state. For the general fund, we're increasing about 191,000. For the refuse fund, we're increasing about 45,000. And for the water fund, increasing about 41,000. As I reported last time, the fund balances on all those funds are, will end the year better than we projected them at the beginning of the year. So these are more than offset by increases in revenues, but as that's required, we are going to exceed the budget amount. So we need to do this process. After the public hearing is opened and closed, then I'll ask you to take action on it later on. With that introduction, then I will officially open the public hearing on the budget amendment. Anyone wish to address the body on the public, on the amendment? Anybody on the meeting?
I don't see anybody on the meeting except council members.
Okay. I see the saying. So having no one present and no one online, close the public hearing. And we'll move on. Consent agenda. Approve the minutes from our council meeting of December third for reporting pay ordinance eight ninety-two and approve annual renewal of cereal malt beverage licenses with the city. Any discussion of these items or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, second.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Lainey?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
Okay. Having no one present and no one online, I'm going to dispense with reading the call to public statement, but if we had anybody, this is where we would love to be. Item three, old business, we have none. So we'll move on to item four A, consider bids for street shop twenty twenty-one CIP items. Yes, Council, we're getting an early start on these items. Steve Chick and Ron Creason have been licking their chops for more new goodies out of the street shop. If you'll remember, we actually had fifty-five thousand dollars left in the CIP for next year. And that was intended for a two-post lift to go in the bay next to the large truck lift that we installed this year. We thought that was going to cost about thirty million dollars. As it turns out, there's some money to do some more stuff in there. So we have pricing for the lift and we also have pricing to fix some more of the fencing around the perimeter on the west sides and the east sides. The fencing contractors indicated that there will be a materials increase at the first of the year. So we wanted to get this under contract before the first of the year, even though we won't spend any money until next year. And it'll all come out of the CIP. So put Steve in charge of getting bids for that. He got three bids from three fence companies, as you can see there. He did include the bids themselves in the staff report, the summary there. Lindsay, Challenger, Allied all submitted. Allied was the low bidder on that part. The two-post lift, which is a lift that will help us lift essentially the on-road trucks, the pickup trucks. The large truck lift is sometimes, it's a little bit too wide for some of those trucks, but also just its size is just too bulky to work with when you're working on the smaller vehicles. So the two-post lift, we did get two bids from that. The low bidder for that is Automotive Equipment Solutions for fourteen one oh four. So what we're asking for approval on tonight is those two bids from Allied, the amount of twenty-nine five forty-seven twenty-four, and for Automotive Equipment, the amount of fourteen one oh four eighty-seven. Those total up to forty-three six fifty-two and eleven cents. Okay, questions for Mike on the bids? Danny or Kevin, anything from the remote side?
No.
I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the bids from Allied Fence and Security Kansas Corporation between nine thousand five hundred forty-seven and twenty-four cents and Automotive Equipment Solutions for fourteen thousand one hundred and four dollars and eighty-seven cents.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Did you get the folks on that, Lana?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Any discussion beyond that? Roll call, please.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lainey?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
Okay. Our next item is to discuss Lainey's review and discuss landscaping options for Roundabout Project. Yes, Council, we are almost one hundred percent design on the Roundabout Project. We're on target for a January letting. And obviously still on target for construction over the summer months. One of the last items of question is the landscaping improvements. I had a fence provide us three different landscaping options, and these mostly are concentrated at the center island. You know, there's several schools of thought about this, but I know that the overall kind of intent was that the Roundabout Project offers opportunities to showcase this as sort of a gateway entrance into the, into the community. So we didn't definitely want to have some sort of a beautification effort going on there. And landscaping in terms of including those in project paths were a really good way to get that jump started, nothing else but to get it paid for. So they provided three options. For consideration, the, from a traffic impact standpoint, the guidance is that there is, there's a spot in the center of the center island where you could completely obstruct the view all the way to the, all the way to the sky and it wouldn't have an impact on sightlines to the right. But I told them to go ahead and keep these landscaping elements at such a level that they don't grow up and cause any visual sightline issues. So the first option there has planks in the center, and then they also have some planks down sort of in southeast quadrant of the, of the Roundabout there, as you can see. I'm pointing my cursor. This would include the welcome to DeSoto sign would be placed at that location. And then the landscaping would fill up the center island. The second two options have that welcome sign in the center of the, of the Roundabout. So option one there, or two, and option three. You know, I don't know that, I'm looking for specific feedback on the plant types of varieties, you know, to have that, be happy to take that into consideration. But I know it's, it's a, it's a project of citywide importance and it's pretty high profile. So we want to have this discussion because I know there's some, some expectation that there's going to be some beautification effort. We do have in the design, we'll send water out to the center island and we will have an irrigation system installed with the project so that, so that we don't have to go out there with watering trucks. But landscaping is an ongoing continuous effort. And, and so I've involved Jake with this because my thought was parks and recs people are going to be out there, the ones doing the landscaping. And this will require probably more attention than any other landscaping that we've got around the city, including some of the stuff in the parks. You know, we'll, we'll want to be out there, maybe even on a weekly, certainly on a monthly basis, tending to this. So I've asked for low maintenance materials. I'm no expert on planting materials, but they tell me these are all kind of low, low maintenance what they've selected here. So I wanted to get your feedback, general thoughts on that. In addition to the center island, I think there also might be some opportunities around the periphery for some landscaping or some other beautification efforts. And I've shown just those areas here in green on this figure. And then lastly, you'll remember this year, we, we kind of adopted the policy for the public art with the DeSoto Arts Council to have temporary public art displays at locations around the city. I don't think that within exact boundaries of the project, I know I'm not sure there's a great location for that, but you know, somewhere, somewhere close to this, maybe just to the north or just to the south, somewhere in the vicinity, there might be an opportunity for one of those. I would not want that in the center island, you know, but maybe somewhere near here if we're going to have this as a gateway sort of feature into the community. So I just wanted to get feedback on that. Like I said, we're very close to final plans and we want to get them out for bid in January. So this is kind of be that final checking step with the council. So. Turn it over to you for some discussion. Questions from Council? Thoughts on options?
I'll chime in.
Go ahead.
I'll kind of mix it up a little bit. I, I like the sign outside of it. I think, I like that location there. I think it'd be better to have that. I think that's too small of a sign to put in the middle of it. And by the time you're in the Roundabout, you're going to be paying attention to what's going on. I like that. I like the sign coming up, but I don't like that landscape configuration. So I do get public input because I got my high school senior and his buddies got a chance to look at this tonight when I was looking at it. So we all vote for three.
The baseball shoe.
Yeah, the baseball.
With the sign on, we all vote for number three, but with the sign on the outside. That's my, that's my take. And you know, you talk about maintenance and that one in particular, you know, they really, you're going to maintain those two or three times through the, through the season. You know, the, the holly, maybe you'll, you'll trim it up in the, in the spring to get the winter kill off of it. I think they're all really low maintenance. I don't, I don't know that you're really going to, you're probably going to have as much of an issue of trash removal.
Trash and weeds, trash.
Yeah, that's probably going to be your biggest.
Bags.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I think they are all low maintenance. I think it's going to be attractive. Anyway, that's my, my two cents.
Lori, your thoughts?
I really didn't have anything different than that. I do also like the sign outside of it. And if I could go through for Kevin, I still did say the third one is the range or the plants anyway that I liked. The combination of them together. So, but you know, I don't really care which one it is. But I do like the sign outside. And I'm not too sure about the Spartan and Junipers. They seem, I don't know how all those get. Seen that, but I'm really not sure. That would be something we want in there.
And again, a personal opinion on junipers, but if you plant, how many you got, two, four, six, eight, nine of them, I guarantee you three of them are going to go bad. You know, you're always going to end up with one or two of them in there is going to have a problem.
Yeah, the third option seems to have the easiest, you know, they grow really well given the low maintenance. So those plants, so.
Great. Well, we've got the purple ones in the day wellies, so I know that those would grow. With limited, with limited care care, they do well. Danny, any thoughts?
Well, I'm, I remember when we went through one while we were on vacation, they had a kind of a diamond in the center and on three. Then this was a three-sided deal that had one that said, welcome to Fort Myers. And then the other side said, had a picture of their high school mascot and the other side had their city logo on it. And it was a three-sided kind of a diamond figure that was only probably in the center, maybe two feet high. And it just, you read it, it was at an angle. And it was made of, it looked like some kind of a plastic kind of thing that looked white. And you know, I don't know if we could do something like that, or maybe it would be better to make something like that that's not that tall and yet it's at an angle. And maybe something like that's a thought too, where there's no flowers out there or plants to take care of.
Kevin, Ritter?
Yes, sir. I, I have kind of the same thoughts as Kevin. I, I liked number three, but I did like the, the sign on the outside. So out of the three options, I like number three the best with, with putting the sign somewhere else.
Okay. I think that's very good feedback. Appreciate that. Yeah. I think that's enough for us to wrap up the plans. All righty. All right. Moving on, then we will approve the twenty twenty budget amendment. Yeah, same. Ordinance, sure. Same as before. So it's actually, it's not an ordinance. If we could just have a motion to approve this presented. And then I have the state budget forms that I'm going to hand around. So I'll need the. Your signatures and then we'll have to figure out how to get Danny's and Kevin's signatures on that. We need to get it into the county by the end of the year. So we'll figure that out. Don't plan to tell you to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. We approved the budget amendments, increased the maximum twenty twenty expenditures for general refuse and water funds as presented.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lainey?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yeah.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carried.
All right. Item five, executive session. We do not have one tonight, so we'll move to advisory reports. Mike, what do you have? Just a few quick things. End of your wrap up stuff we're doing here internally. CARES Act projects mostly, we've submitted for reimbursement on a hundred percent of our internal CARES Act projects. We expect to get that checked by the end of next week. So that's good. We'll be, we'll be whole on our expenditures and revenues for that. On the broadband of CARES Act, RG Fiber has been out there working. I don't know if you've been able to see them, they're a little bit past you, but they've been out there with a rock drill. And Mike Bosch says by the end of next week, they'll be in a position where I can go verify the installation and get that wrapped up as well. So very happy about that. So it looks like all the CARES Act stuff will be in and at least submitted the reimbursement to the county. And it looks like that second half of the broadband probably won't be reimbursed until January, but that's, that's fine. So that's, very happy about that. That took a lot of effort on our part to get those projects in, up and rolling and done. I want to thank Steve Chick for his efforts with some of the HBAC stuff specials, big project.
Now it has to be, it has to be paid by the end of the month.
Yeah, by December thirty. Yeah. We have to, we have to pay the vendors and submit to the county the reimbursement by December thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I did drive, I went down Waverly today and there's kind of sticking out a hundred and fifteen.
Yeah. Yeah. There's sections in there where they couldn't get through the road. It's the same old story. Yeah.
And they're hooking up customers on Kill Creek.
Yeah. 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 They've been, Zoom has been hooking up customers for a month now. Yeah. They really, well, they were already going then. They had a start on it. So I'm, you know, really happy about that. The county's been pretty good to work with on that process too, you know, for them, it was, it was quite an effort administratively countywide to figure out what to do with a hundred and sixteen million dollars. They did a pretty good job. They did a pretty good job with it. So this is, you know, one of those add that to the list of things you didn't expect to be doing this year. You know, if everybody was able to adjust pretty well. The other thing, just, just kind of a free cursor, at the January seventh meeting, planning on having the discussion on our CIP, CIP update and strategic plan update. So I'll be working on getting information for that, for that, for that meeting during the last couple of weeks of the year. And that's, that's it for me. Okay. City attorney?
Yeah, just wanted to let you guys know the judge did hold the, the virtual hearing on the, the House of eighty-two twenty-five Delaware. Neither one of the defendants appeared. So I'm expecting the judge to sign off on the default judgment any day now. So I think Steve Chick already has at least one bid for demolishing the house. But as you had indicated, we'll bring that back to the council before, before we move forward on that. So.
Anything else?
Nope.
City clerk?
I have nothing further except to wish all of you a very happy holiday season.
Thank you. Council? Kevin Ritter, anything for the group tonight?
I don't believe so, Mayor. I think I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny, anything? Share?
No. Thank you, Mayor. Just everybody have a great holiday.
All right, thank you. Lori?
Yeah, I just really wanted to take a moment and kind of reflect back on the year and, you know, just kind of comment that it was something that we never expected and something that we really don't want ever have to go through again, but it is the way it is now and moving forward. And, you know, I feel that we as a city still got a lot accomplished for what we were going through. We did a lot of positive things out of what we had. And I think, you know, a lot of that, we, there was a lot of things even behind the scenes that were going on that, you know, a lot of people don't know about, some of the economic development efforts and stuff. And, and, you know, I just really, really want to, you know, just say thank you to, you know, the mayor and Mike. Because, you know, what you guys got done this year is just really amazing. I know there's other cities that darn doing as well and probably are, you know, having some turmoil and stuff. But we fought through it and we did a lot. We made the best of everything. And I think we'll be moving into next year with some good outlooks and being able to be pretty stable and start working on projects and continuing what didn't even really get put on hold. And that's pretty amazing that we really did a lot of stuff. So thank you, both of you and all the council members, Patrick and all the staff really, you know, it just seems that. They deserve a great pat on the back and Mike you especially. I know we tell you this all the time, but, you know, not everybody handled things as well as you did. And I really, really appreciate what you have done. You kept the city going.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
And Merry Christmas to everyone and looking forward to giving you guys a shot next year.
Yeah, looking forward to that shot. Two, two, right?
Two of them each, one in each.
Thank you. Thank you. Kevin?
Wow, second. I mean, that was great. I kind of feel a little lost for going after that. But really just a question, I've noticed on social media, kind of a rash of break-ins, it sounds like. Just hopefully, you know, the sheriff's department's given adequate attention to, you know, one, following up on that, but also being sensitive to crime in our community. And it sounds like several cars were broken into kind of in the downtown area. So hopefully they can get, hopefully they're given that attention.
Definitely. And we've had just a lot more vandalism around this year than, I think the break-ins are separate. But this year, the vandalism, the graffiti and the start of the fires and the burning ruts in the soccer field, they've just been a lot more of that sort of activity, it seems like. I did get the sheriff's report for November earlier this week. And from a traffic impact, the tickets are up and accidents are down. So that's always kind of the way you want to see the trend going. But things like burglaries and, and property damage and property crimes are up. Definitely something we've, I've had discussions with our new liaison, Chip Martinez, who's the patrol captain now, had those discussions with him. Also wanted to thank the mayor. I know you all got copied on the speed, the speeding issue on Lion dot street. Sheriff's office was very responsive to that. You know, put out, you know, they're going to be putting out, putting out the speed trailer that shows your speed and flashes at them. It's not quite available yet. They put out a data recorder. So I guess all that is to say, you know, we're still pretty happy about Sheriff's Office and their response and, and just how do they respond when things like that occur especially. And yeah, we're looking into that, that too. Thanks. Just to carry on that, so Mike and I were having these exchanges about the speeding thing on, on Lion dot. I got this like, like five minutes after I sent Mike the last email, I got this marketing email from a company that sells speed limit signs with the radar detection. I got his Google, it's deep.
It is. Think it.
FireEye, whoever it is that got hacked.
Yeah. But I shared that with Mike and it was like, gee whiz, I've never, hadn't experienced that level, you know, like you do a search and immediately get, or everything shows up in a Facebook feed or something. But man, an email exchange.
He didn't bottle it yet.
Yeah, no. Thinking about it though, we might get a couple, three of those. Put them around. Solar powered.
Solar powered. The, I do have one piece of business. We have a vacancy on our Board of Zoning Appeals right now. We don't have any pending business, but we have a vacancy. I have recruited someone to step in and take that position. Doug Picker has stepped away from that spot. And so I would like your approval of my appointment of Lex Miloweski to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Lex kind of new to the area. He's been here about five years, but in, in terms, but he's my neighbor behind me and I've gotten to know him over the last couple of years. Local business guy and he do a great job there. So I would ask for an approval of my appointment of Lex.
I'll make that motion, good. No.
Miloweski.
Whiskey.
Second, Dan.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everybody. I don't have anything else tonight, I don't believe, other than just to echo the wishes, good wishes for a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays and see you next year.
I'll make a motion, adjourned, say.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. Very good. Thank you, everybody.